We will start with item one, which is the COVID-19 update. Item one, time has been set aside for update on COVID-19 emergency. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to share with you just a little bit of info. Some of this I've given you, actually, most of this I've given to you prior. I will not go over the actual county numbers. Those are on their website and I would just be repeating what's already there. What is of note, though, is just a quick update for you on vaccine policy. And reiterate, thank you again for your leadership. We are 99.7% compliant. That is all employees across the board, about 89.5. So we'll round that up to 90% of our employees are in fact vaccinated. I did provide you with the breakdown. I believe that some of you had asked for a breakdown by department. I've since provided that to you. There was a question about how many actual employees were non-compliant. The number is 11. So we are moving with the implementation of the component of the AD. And so we will do that post haste. And so we're in that process now. The other thing I wanted to mention, I did receive a memo from Councilmember Santa Cruz regarding bus fares. We will bring that back to you on the 21st. There were two parts to that. One is a recommendation or suggestion to continue with free bus fares through the end of the fiscal year, which I'm supportive of, and we can bring back a recommendation to that effect on the 21st. The second part of that was to really look at a longer term free fare transit configuration. My suggestion would be that we would engage with other partners like the University of Arizona, Pima College, TUSD in those discussions. So I may not be ready with all of that before the 21st, but I did want to let you know that we are going down that path. Secondarily, but equally as important, we will also potentially bring back policy thoughts for your consideration as a part of that free transit going forward, just to make sure that we are able to have a discussion about some of the security challenges that we have seen, which, some of which can be attributed to the free fares. That's all, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions as the council sees fit.
Thank you so much. I'm really happy and I want to congratulate my colleagues on the council for their steadfast effort for vaccination mandate. You know, I was, I was listening to a story on the news this morning and they were talking about mandates and how effective they have proved to be throughout the country, both on private and jurisdictional mandates. And so I just wanted to congratulate my colleagues, the city manager, and all of the executive leadership team that, you know, put our minds together and we all really stuck to, to what is right and what science tells us is right. And so I just wanted to congratulate you, City Mr. Manager, and all of my colleagues that moved to make this mandate happen. I'm really happy because only 11, as you reported, 11 employees were non-compliant. And so that will not affect the service delivery of the services that our citizens deserve. I, I do want to talk about numbers because we are not out of the woods yet. In Arizona, just today, there were 3,000 new positive COVID-19 cases reported. In Pima County, just today, 293 COVID cases reported. The number of new deaths reported in Arizona today are 172 and 21 new deaths in Pima County. I received a call from our partners in our hospitals. And, you know, I would say that the concern is that ICU beds are very, very limited. 99% of the cases that hospitals are seeing are unvaccinated folks. So again, healthcare professionals recommend getting your vaccine, those that do have a vaccine, to get your boosters. Children five and over can get vaccinated. It's, you know, especially those of us that have children in school, we want to make sure that we're sending them to a healthy environment. We don't want our children to, to lose school, to have to shut down classrooms and, and schools. So let's do everything we possibly can to get vaccinated. It's free, it's readily available, and let's keep our guards up. So I just wanted to make sure that I, that I talked about that. Is there anything else that my colleagues on the council would want to talk about? I do see hands up, Councilmember Feimbris, and then Councilmember Kozachek. And then I see your hand up, Council, City Manager Ortega. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, there's been a surge that you mentioned of deaths. Do we have a breakdown of who's dying on these issues? I know that we have seen a number in the state increase. People that are, the hospitals are inundated with people in COVID crisis. And then we see the new number of deaths, but we see 21 today in Pima County, right? We saw yesterday, the day before, and the day before, we saw a huge increase in the state. What is the governor going to be doing about this? I was maybe visiting, what his stance was, and what we, what can we do? We should have Teresa Collins ask us what else can we do? But all right, we need to stretch it out because I think, I see a lot of people not wearing masks, not social distancing, and they're just converging again because I think they think it's over and it's not.
Well, you know, people were, were letting their guards down because the numbers were going down. But unfortunately, because of the Delta variant, the, I would say, what I am hearing from professional health experts and both Dr. Collins and hospital CEOs, they are seeing unvaccinated. 99% of the people ending up in the hospital are unvaccinated. And for some time there, the number of children that were being attended to at hospitals was, was growing. I don't have the latest numbers and I don't have the details of the 21 deaths that happened. But in terms of the state, Mr. Attorney, would you happen to have an update on any of the legal matters that we have?
I do, Your Honor. And what I'll, I'll start with an update on the federal orders because there's a lot going on with that. I'm just going to preface that by saying, all of the federal orders, which deals with everything from the federal employees themselves, to federal contractors, to the OSHA requirements, to the federal orders with respect to healthcare workers, that's all going to end up in front of the Supreme Court at the end of the day, whenever that is. So we're just going to have to wait and see for the, how that finally plays out with the highest court in the land. But breaking them into their individual categories, the OSHA rules, the OSHA temporary standard that was directed by the president and promulgated by OSHA, that is currently on hold based on an injunction issued in the federal courts while that matter is being litigated. The cases have all been consolidated into a multi-district litigation. That's all now being held in the Sixth Circuit, which is in Ohio. The Biden administration is trying to get the injunction lifted in the meantime. But for now, the OSHA standard is suspended until the litigation plays out. With respect to the president's orders directing healthcare workers to get vaccinated, that is also under an order of injunction that came out of Louisiana and Missouri. And that litigation is ongoing and again, will be headed up to the highest court in the land. The president's orders with respect to federal employees themselves, that has survived challenge and was not put on hold. And so federal employees themselves have been subject to the requirement to get vaccinated. Then you have the presidential order attempting to require federal contractors to require that their employees get vaccinated by virtue of having a contract with the federal government. That order also has been the subject of an injunction in several states. That injunction is not yet nationwide, but there are additional actions pending, including one brought by the Arizona Attorney General, attempting to get that injunction to play out in additional states as well. So we're just going to have to see how that all plays out. I want to be very clear here, though. The city's policy, the city of Tucson's policy, was not premised upon or conditioned upon any of those federal dictates. It was a decision made under your local authority, under the charter. And with respect to the legal actions we've faced as a result of the policy, things are going well. The legal action brought by the labor organizations was scheduled for a preliminary injunction hearing at the end of last week. But the labor organizations dropped that request based on the fact of the level of compliance among city employees, that there really wasn't a basis for any kind of emergency order from the court. We had a separate legal action that was filed by an individual fire employee that was scheduled and conducted a hearing for a preliminary injunction yesterday. The city manager was our main witness in that case. And the judge not only denied the preliminary injunction request, but dismissed the complaint in its entirety. And so our vaccine policy has withstood the challenges that have come forward. We do still continue to battle with the Attorney General's office and respond to 1487 complaints filed by Arizona legislators. Senator Leach had filed one that he withdrew after we provided our response. But Kelly Townsend has stepped in and refiled that 1487 complaint. So we are responding to that one, as well as some subpoenas from the Attorney General's office, et cetera. So we continue to defend the actions of the mayor and council. And thus far, those efforts have been successful.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Mayor, is there anything else we should speak to?
Councilmember Feimbris, let me have Steve jump in here and then, and then we, if there are any...
I was done with my questions, but go ahead.
Ready, go ahead, Councilmember Kozachek.
Great. A couple of things. First of all, the first specific one and then a more general one. The specific one will be for Mr. Ortega. We have still about 350 to 400 employees who may be compliant, but they've applied for either an accommodation or an exemption. We have a masking requirement and a testing requirement. When will that begin? And describe to us the, how that's going to be implemented locally while the OSHA proceeding is still in court? The more general question is probably for Rankin. New York City just implemented a vaccine mandate for all private employers. We're not, I would argue, we are not in a surge. We're in the midst of a continuous high infection rate. It's been going on for a few months now. The, the mayor indicated that today's daily infection rate was 270 something. The entire first week of June was 130. So that's the comparison. So we're, we are in a continuous high infection condition. Omicron will be here for sure. We know it's more highly, we suspect it's more highly contagious. We don't know in terms of how severely the infections will be. So I guess to my rank is what more can we do? You know, can we limit large gatherings with all the litigation and executive orders? You know, what's left in our toolkit while this thing continues on? So one for each one.
I'll go ahead and jump in first on the general and then Mike at the, the specific question. The short answer is that the legal landscape is changing weekly, if not daily. On a lot of these, I was tracking the same action, Councilmember Kozachek, that you just referenced, New York City's requirement. That doesn't apply just to its own employees, but to private employers throughout the city. And we'd have to really take a hard look at that in terms of local authority. You know, it's, it's, the short answer is we, we know we'll end up over in court on it one way or another if we tried to take that type of action. And I don't want to, you know, sound too, well, I need to be measured in the response in terms of what more we could do. Right now, it isn't entirely clear that we can do more than, than what we've already done, other than what the manager's about to talk about in terms of additional policies with respect to our own employees. And it's in that area that it's been quite clear, even in the federal litigation, that that's the greatest level of authority of the jurisdiction to act is with respect to its own organization and its own employees and enforcing policies and, and requirements that are necessary to protect their own workers and to protect the community that they serve.
Mayor, Councilmember Kozachek. So the, the number of medical exemptions and religious accommodations are currently at about 399. And so what I have been working on is testing for those individuals that are unvaccinated but compliant. And as I mentioned last time, I'm going down a path where I would give the employee an opportunity to participate in the University of Arizona study that's under the direction of Dr. Burgess. I've chatted with him, the staff has chatted with him as well, working out the logistics of that. Reason that that's important is because they are looking for unvaccinated but compliant individuals that are out in the, in the community for their testing information. If an employee chooses not to participate in that, but is still falls in the category of being unvaccinated, then they would be required to provide a weekly test at their expense to be uploaded in a portal. My hesitation there and the challenge that I'm running into is differentiating a COVID-19 test from other kinds of tests. And so apparently our, I use the term insurance, treats all testing the same. And so I'm having to go back through and look at the plan so that I can, I can differentiate those, those tests. Short answer is, I'm hoping to implement it within the next week or two at the latest, but we are moving in that direction. Two other things in terms of, I'll call them restrictions or concerns that you voiced. One of them was masking. We currently have our masking requirement for all indoor, for, for, for everybody, not just those that are unvaccinated. I will continue down that path for the foreseeable future. I do not see a differentiation right this minute for that because that requirement is already in place. There is a restriction on travel for those that are unvaccinated but compliant, for those that are asking for discretionary travel, such as, such as training. They are not allowed to be on city-paid travel status. So that's an update on those.
See, here's my frustration with that, Mike, is that we, we first took action on this in August. What was August 10th, August something? We're four months down the road now and we're still trying to figure out the testing piece. Meanwhile, all 3,500 of our employees who chose to get vaccinated have been working alongside these individuals and being placed in a, in a vulnerable and, in a vulnerable position. We have fire employees, for instance, who have lived together for four days at a time. And, and the vast majority of the fire employees got vaccinated. They're, they're not, they're not enjoying the, the notion that cities still try to figure out how to make them safe in their own work environment. So another week or two just continues down the path of making our employees who chose vaccination, chose science, to continue to have to work around coworkers who didn't. And I don't think that's fair to them.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others have any comments or questions on this item? All righty, hearing none. We're moving on to item two. Item two is a conversation on poverty in Pima County. This item has been continued at the request of staff. And we move on to item three. This time has been set aside for discussion on the Minimum Wage Act and the framework to enforce the initiative that just passed, the city of Tucson, this November. Mr. Manager, I know that you have a, your thoughts on this particular item, but we also want to hear from our city attorney on the legal issues that pertain to this item. So go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, members of the council. So this obviously is in response to the ballot initiative that was recently adopted by the voters. One of the pieces initially when this came up was the expectation that we would have a lot of opportunity for employees to see a bump in salaries based on that. Quite frankly, anecdotally, I know that because of the market, I'm expecting that in order for companies to compete, particularly in some of the service industries, we're already going to see them above the $15. So I'm not as concerned about a variety of businesses out of compliance with that. I just wanted to let you know that is something that has been on my radar, that although it was, you know, it was approved by, by the initiative, I'm not expecting the... it was, you know, it was approved by, by the initiative, I'm not expecting the enforcement will be so onerous just because of the market conditions we currently have in, in, in our community. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city attorney for some of the detail of the enforcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, included within the agenda materials is the earlier memorandum that I had provided about the, the initiative, which is now approved by the voters and is part of our code, and it will be the law going forward. In that memorandum, I did identify a, a number of legal concerns and provisions within the act itself that I believed and continue to believe are legally unenforceable, and that, and that will remain the case going forward. And I just want to, I'll, I'll briefly describe what those components of the act are. First, the act attempts to create a private cause of action, a private lawsuit, that someone can bring in Tucson City Court and seek damages, fees, attorney's fees, liquidated damages and, and other penalties if they bring it within three years of, of an asserted violation. And it attempts to give standing to advocacy groups to come forward on behalf of individual employees and bring those types of actions in Tucson City Court. As I described in the memorandum, Tucson City Court doesn't have jurisdiction to hear those types of cases. City Court is a municipal court, a police court. This jurisdiction is established by Arizona constitution and statute and does not include private civil actions that include the types of remedies that are included in the act. So I'll continue to, to maintain that position and we'll just have to see how that plays out over time. Another issue in the act was a, a provision in the act that attempts to limit the ability of employers to require their employees to provide a valid social security number. And this provision is in conflict with state and federal law. Employers have the legal ability to, to require their employees to provide a valid social security number. And so we cannot punish employers for, for doing that. And, and so regardless as to how this moves forward and the administration that gets set up to handle complaints, complaints about social security numbers will not be something that, that we can enforce or pursue. Finally, there is a provision in the act that references the ability to recover liquidated damages, which liquidated damages are a, a particular thing that are negotiated between two parties in a contract that they don't apply here at all. So that's really not something that's going to be enforceable going forward. One other thing that I do need to remind you of is that, I think you all know that Flagstaff had been the first city in Arizona to establish its own local minimum wage above and beyond what's required statewide under state statute. Well, the state legislature adopted some legislation that imposed a $1.1 million assessment against Flagstaff on the theory that Flagstaff's local minimum wage cost the state extra money in terms of engaging in contracts and other business within the city Flagstaff. And so assessed Flagstaff over a million dollars in the last budget cycle. Flagstaff challenged that legislative act. We joined in as an amicus to help Flagstaff out in that litigation. And Flagstaff did prevail in the trial court, but it's only in the trial court thus far. And the state has appealed, so it's going up to the Arizona Court of Appeals and potentially ultimately to the Arizona Supreme Court. So we're going to have to keep an eye on that and see how that plays out because if an assessment by the state against Flagstaff, given the size of Flagstaff and the amount of interactions between state government and local government and Flagstaff is over a million dollars, you could foresee it being considerably higher with respect to the city of Tucson. That said, I don't think the state's legal position is very strong. I think the Flagstaff and Tucson position is quite strong, but nonetheless, let's not lose sight of that. And as part of your discussion today, I would like just a simple motion authorizing us to continue to support Flagstaff in that litigation through the filing of briefs as it continues through the appellate process.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
There's the second, a motion and a second. Let's, let's go a bit to discussion before, before we go to a vote on that. In your memo that you included for us, Mr. Rankin, you talk about that if initiative is approved by voters, the petition cannot later be amended or repealed except by subsequent election. How do we reconcile the, the items that you mentioned you had concern about, legal concern about with the initiative being approved by Tucson voters?
Thank you for asking that, Mayor. Well, we can't reconcile it by ordinance. We can't strike it out of the code, et cetera. Those provisions will be in the code. And so as a result, people are going to ask about it, right? They're going to see it in the code and say, well, my employer's saying I have to provide a valid social security number, or I'm filing a private action over in city court. And it's just going to be by legal opinion giving direction to the new department, which we'll talk about in a moment, that will be established to administer and enforce the remaining provisions of the act. And, and I wanted to say that even though I've pointed out these, these issues, these problems with certain provisions of the act, the act overall has been approved by the voters and its other provisions are going to be in place and going to be enforceable, including the, the main provision in terms of a, a, a higher minimum wage over time, beginning in April of 2022. And the act also requires the city to establish a Department of Labor standards and to staff it up in order to administer and enforce the act. And the voters have spoken and we will do that. And so there will be continuing actions by the city manager and by the mayor and council to establish the Department of Labor standards, which will need to happen by April 1st of 2022, to staff it up as you see appropriate in terms of the budget allocation that you make for, for staffing that department. And you can also decide where that department is located, whether it's part of an existing department within the city organizational structure. And you'll work with the manager going forward to make all of those policy and administrative and budgeting decisions. But to get back to your point, Mayor, yes, those provisions will remain in the code, but it will just be by virtue of the operation of the legal opinions. And then as if we end up in any litigation over that, which is certainly possible, then we'll get court decisions and, and we'll abide by those.
My second question is regarding the Flagstaff case against the state of Arizona. As I know it, Proposition 206 approved by Arizona voters, which is the minimum wage statewide, gave cities, towns and counties the ability of establishing their own minimum wage. This conversation is being had at the Pima County Board of Supervisors because a lot of the same people that were pushing the initiative within the city are asking Pima County Board of Supervisors to establish the minimum wage to be $15. But my real question is, what is the certainty of the case of the, the Flagstaff against the state if it is a voter approved initiative that gave us cities and towns and counties the ability to, to change our minimum wage?
So as I said before, I think the city's position is quite strong, and it's quite strong in part because of the Voter Protection Act and the fact that Proposition 206 was a statewide voter approved initiative that as you, exactly, you're exactly right, Mayor, in saying that it, it allowed for local jurisdictions, not just cities, but also counties, to establish their own local minimum wage. And so that was one of Flagstaff's main arguments, is that the state's attempt to impose a punitive assessment would violate the Voter Protection Act in that it would undercut the authority that was given to local jurisdictions through the voter approved initiative. But we'll have to see if, so, but the decision of the court, the trial court, really was premised on the fact that the state's attempt to assess Flagstaff based on this theoretical additional cost to the state and imposing a reimbursement requirement on the city was completely arbitrary in that there was no supportable basis for the state's assertion that they actually incur extra costs because there's a higher minimum wage requirement in Flagstaff. Because after all, the state itself is exempt from paying its own workers the local minimum wage. They're only required to follow the state law. The state's argument is that they incur indirect higher costs because anyone they contract with in Flagstaff is paying a higher payroll and therefore there's passing on the costs to the state. And so I do think that's a, a tough bar for the, the state to, to overcome. But I don't get to make the decision in court, we just get to argue it. And, but I believe the city's position is, is quite strong.
Good. Councilmember Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I had similar questions, so thank you for that. My question maybe is to the city manager is, so we have to establish a Department of Labor to help investigate, you know, as these issues come up and also help coordinate with public messaging. What kind of resources are needed to stand up this department and what is your timeline in doing so?
Mayor, Councilwoman Santa Cruz, thank you. So first of all, the deadline is, I understand it is April 1 for us to have a quote department up or at least the allocation of that resource. My expectation is to take some of our existing staff. I may have to allocate a couple of additional staff depending on the magnitude of the effort. I will place it in the business services function, so it will be part of the umbrella of business services, and I'm expecting to have it up and running by the April 1st deadline.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
So, Mr. Manager, is there, do you have an approximate amount of money that we would have to put into this Department of Labor standards? Is there any conversation in terms of preliminary numbers to make this work?
So Mayor, I, I do expect it will be a couple of hundred thousand dollars initially. The reason that I hesitate in giving you a final number, what I'm trying to do is organize within the, the current resources we have. We do have vacancies that are out there. What I'm trying to get away from is burdening the existing staff, but if I can figure out ways to utilize some of the vacancies that I have across the organization, then I may do that. But keep in mind, a big part of this will be a function of, of the magnitude of the effort. As I mentioned early on, I'm not expecting a lot of non-compliance early on just because of the market. Right now, the market is such that in most instances, people are, are, businesses are paying people more than, than what the minimum is, at least in the first year. That might change, and I may have to come back to you and say, okay, we're going to need additional folks. But that's how I'm approaching it. If it were a year and a half ago, I think it would have been a different story and I would really have to staff up for that enforcement. I'm not expecting to have to do that, but I reserve a little bit of-
Yes.
Have that conversation.
Yes, Mr. Manager, and, and you know, even if we say right now, we don't have to have this established until April of 2022, April of 2022 is going to get here really quick. So what I would highly recommend because establishing the formation of this Department of Labor standards, even if you place it within a, another department that they need to work with, it's an important task that we need to receive community input on. I'm just thinking in terms of the different stakeholders that are part of this step. I'm thinking labor rights organization, immigrant rights, Pima County, small businesses and organizations that represent small businesses. We need to make sure that we initiate a community engagement and feedback process. I also believe that we have to explore how other cities, whether it's in Arizona or throughout the country, have organized similar departments. And what the expertise that is needed by, if you are going to hire new employees, what is the expertise that they need in terms of labor rules and knowledge? So I would, I would highly recommend that there is a process to, to how we establish the department because, you know, voters approved this initiative and I think we have to get it right. I also am connecting the needs of, of this initiative to a discussion that I'm requesting for December 21st, that updates our living wage ordinance. The mayor and council previously to us had approved a living wage ordinance, and we have not updated that living wage ordinance in at least 10 years. So I want to have that discussion and what is the role that this new section or department or office will play in terms of labor standards, rights, and how those employee rights are communicated to our small businesses and our companies that, that have, that have a business and that pay employees here in the city of Tucson. So that, that's what I would recommend, Mr. Manager, that we look at other examples and initiate a community conversation with a different stakeholder, holders in our community that are going to be affected in one way, shape or form by this. So I do see Councilmember Fimbriz's hand up, and then we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Fimbriz?
I'm interested to find out. I know the state's numbers are going up in January 1st. Do anybody know what that amount is? The other thing is, is what's the county doing on this? I know they were talking about discussions about bringing it up and trying to match the city, I hope, at one time. And seeing that there's four Democrats on it, I was wondering if they're going to do, make it a reality.
Mayor, first, first of all, I do not know what the state's level will be on January 1st. I know what ours will be, but I don't know what this- $12.80 according to our legal researcher in the, in the room here.
January 1st is going to $12.80 to the state? Okay, thank you, Michael. And then what about the county? Any discussion on the county with them?
Pima County has been discussing it and exploring. I do not know what they are, where they are legislatively to put that out there. I just don't know. But I do know that they have discussed it and they are exploring it, at least at the staff level.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Rena.
Councilmember Fimbriz, the last I have heard the Pima County Board of Supervisors discuss the possibility, Supervisor Grijalva brought to the rest of the Board of Supervisors the concept of approving, because a board can approve a minimum wage ordinance without having to go to the voters of Pima County. And I guess the thought of Supervisor Grijalva was, you know, since the city of Tucson voters passed their initiative, they're the majority of voters in Pima County, they're about 60, city of Tucson residents are about 60 to 63% of Pima County residents. She thought it would be incumbent upon the Board of Supervisors to approve a minimum wage at 15 with similar language that were, was approved by the city of Tucson voters through ordinance, and they can do that. They can approve the minimum wage through ordinance. Prop 206 gave all of us jurisdictions that ability so that we can, the region could have, you know- so that we can, the region could have, you know, could have the same minimum wage. Last I heard, there was no appetite at the Board of Supervisors to do that. And they suggested that there, you know, the, the people that organize the minimum wage in the city of Tucson organize an initiative or an election to put it to the voters of Pima County. So that was the last I heard. I don't know if there's any movement on that.
I have a question for Mike Rankin. If the state goes to $12.80 on January 1, will the county have to move similar to it as they are part of the state?
Councilmember Fimbras, absolutely. The proposition that applies statewide allows a local jurisdiction to set its own minimum wage, but it cannot be any lower than the state minimum wage. So it sets a floor, not a ceiling.
Good. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So let's go to a vote. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, so you have your, Mr. Rankin, you have your authority to move ahead. Mr. Ortega, just, just keep us informed on the community engagement piece with stakeholders. I think that's going to be very important. And then any, any other concepts of how other cities enforce it? And if we can follow, if, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If we can follow some of what other cities are already doing, then I think we should tap into that. Councilmember Cunningham, have your hand up? Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious about the, I was just curious about the inflation adjustment. Do we have this, a similar formula? What's the difference between the inflation adjustment at the state level and the city level?
Mr. Rankin?
Give us a minute to check.
Yeah, I'm just, so the, the Minimum Wage Act that was approved by the voters sets a progressing standard over, beginning in April 1 of '22, it goes to $13 an hour. January 1 of '23, it goes to $13.50. January 1 of 2024, it goes to $14.25, until finally going up to $15 an hour effective on January 1 of 2025, with then subsequent annual increases based upon an indexed inflation rate. The Arizona adjustments from this point forward are going to go up from that $12.80 mark. So we'll be at $13 in April of 2022, the state will be at $12.80. But then thereafter annually, the state, under the existing legislation, it goes up by a inflationary amount that's fixed to a particular
It's aggregate. So it's an aggregate on the index over the 12 months, right? And so this is my thing. Most projections are that the inflation rate next year are going to be 6.2. So what's crazy is, is that if we're at $12.80 for '22, the state minimum wage will probably be $13.70 for '23, which will be more than ours. So that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is the writing's on the wall on that one. And I, I just was kind of, I, I just did the numbers like right now as we were having this conversation and I was thinking, well, gee, that's interesting. So I just wanted to point that out, but if we get an aggregate of 6.2%, which is where a lot of the people are saying 2022 is going to be, then our 2023 state minimum wage is going to be about $13.70. That's my input. Sorry to tag on in the conversation at the end.
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out, with that point made by Councilmember Cunningham, we're going to have to figure out, even if the initiative, the Tucson Minimum Wage Initiative says 13, if the state has a bigger inflation, a bigger push, which, which takes precedent. So thank you for bringing up.
We may have to go back to the voters and make a few tweaks to ours just so that, to ensure that we're never lower than the states and maybe even make some alterations so we're able to make it a little more enforceable. That's all. I mean, I, it, look, it's, it's initiative I supported. People should be paid with their worth, but I sure as heck don't want to be offering a lower minimum wage or having an ordinance in place with a lower minimum wage than the states.
Understood.
And just as a follow-up to that, Mayor?
Just to refer Mike Rankin, if, if that were to occur, couldn't the city council implement a higher minimum wage than what the voters approved?
Councilmember Kazachek and Mayor Maron, I'm sorry, I interrupted. You wouldn't even need to, because by operation of law, the higher number is going to control.
Okay. All righty, perfect. Let's move on to item five. Thank you all so much. Great discussion. Item, I'm sorry, item four was a strategic staffing plan. This item has been continued at the request of staff. And then we move on to item five. This is the retention payment for city employees. Time has been set aside for discussion of a one-time retention payment for city employees. And this is a conversation that we had bought to the forefront. I had requested, Mr. Manager, that you take a look at the possibility of an incentive payment to our city employees regarding compliance with our vaccination mandate. I know that other jurisdictions were trying an incentive pa- payment, but I think you've looked at the retention payment as a bigger possibility. So go ahead, Mr. Manager, tell us what you're thinking and what the mayor and council needs to do to, to help with this issue.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And you're absolutely right. This was really a spinoff from the November 8 memo that you had sent outlining a request for me to explore. You, at the time, you were talking about specifically retention for vaccinations and so forth. And as I started to look at this, and as you remember from my presentation regarding the staffing strategic plan and all the conversations around that, we've got, we've got other challenges that we're facing that have really come to light as a part of the vaccine policy, specifically retention and going down the path of what does recruitment look like. So there were two pieces of that that I looked at and I'm implementing one of them administratively and one of them I'm bringing to you for consideration. So the one that I am implementing administratively is a tuition, excuse me, a student loan repayment reimbursement. And so it's very similar to tuition reimbursement, but this is specifically for student loans. The way that it will work, and I think I mentioned this last time, and I believe Councilmember Cunningham had mentioned, you know, making sure that we're consistent with the federal student loan program. So we are moving on that directly, which will give opportunity for employees to receive up to 50 to 50 annually for their student loan payments, and that's on a reimbursement basis. The second one is a true retention payment. And as I looked at our financials, both from a FY21 basis and an FY22 projection basis, I'm very comfortable that we ended '21 better than what we had projected and that we're on track to, to end '22 better than we projected. So I started looking at a variety of opportunities that that might entail and ultimately landed on a recommendation for a $1,000 one-time distribution. That would basically be distributed on December 17. That's our goal. The eligible employees would be all employees that would, that were employed by the city of Tucson on December 1 and were compliant. I think it really demonstrates the appreciation that you all have and that I have certainly for the energy and effort that employees have put forth over the last year and 20 months now, almost 22 months. The pandemic has been incredible, but we think that this is a way for us to, again, show and demonstrate our appreciation. One of the items that I looked at was potentially allocating additional time off for some of the employees. Everyone's tired, burned out, fatigued. I really couldn't figure out a way to do that without adding to the already high vacancy rate and causing additional challenges from a fatigue standpoint. Total cost of this is about $4.3 million, and that's all funds. I am recommending that this would be from carryover from FY21. I am expecting that each of the funds, the four big ones, General Fund, the Enterprise Funds of HERF, Water, and ES, would all carry, would all use carryover to pay for those, those distributions. Should any of the funds be short, I would cover that from General Fund, but at this point, I don't see the need to do that. No action is required or requested of you under this item. There is an item, an ordinance, that's under item 7J in this evening's meeting, Mayor, and that's where the action will actually be taken. So that is my recommendation, and I am asking for support, but again, as a part of item 7J. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I just have a simple question, and then we'll start with my colleagues on the council. This one-time $1,000 payment to each and every one of our employees, including part-time employees, it's a four-point, estimated at $4.3 million in terms of cost. Would that get in the way of the discussions that we've had here before regarding continuing to pay cost of living adjustments and keeping up with our market rate analysis of how we want to continue keeping pace with the market for all of our employees?
Thank you, Mayor. Great question. So before I answer it, you did mention the part-time employees and temporary employees. So all employees will be eligible. There, if an employee is part-time, does not work a full 40-hour work week, their, their allocation will be prorated. So an employee that works 20 hours a week would get half of the $1,000. But the denominator will all be $1,000. That, that is the intent, but based on a 40-hour work week or a full-time employee. With regard to your, your specific question, thank you for asking that, because that is an important piece of this. That's why I was very explicit in that I am recommending the use of carryover, not ongoing dollars. And so these are dollars that, that we have from FY21, so they do not factor into a FY23 or beyond basis. And again, because it is one-time, it's not an ongoing expense.
Excellent. That's great news. Councilmember Cunningham and then Councilmember Fimbras.
First of all, I just wanted to thank you for thinking of the employees. It's a good, it's a good, everybody who's coming to work right now deserves a big old round of applause from us, man. It's one of those things where, like, if I could give every employee a hug, I would, because we, we, this was an incredible time. Few things. When we talk about our employees, we're not just talking about them, we're talking about their households, right? I mean, nod your heads if you agree. But the bottom line is, is that I keep hearing about student loan debt around the country. Why should we limit this to just our employees? If they got, if they got a spouse in their household that's got 30 grand or 40 grand that they're underneath, why don't we let them apply for that 50 to 50? I mean, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. I'm not, look, if it's going to break the bank, Mr. Manager, I totally understand. But if we're really into investing in our, our employees and their households, let's put our money where our mouth is, right? So that's kind of what, I, I'm, I'm, as I'm think, as I heard you say this student loan thing, I was thinking, that's awesome for our employees that we're doing it. But what about that employee who's married to a nurse or to a, a teacher or to a person trying to get their PhD who's, who's got 125 grand and can't buy a house in the city of Tucson because of gentrification, of, of the cost of housing, all those things? So I'm, I'm, I'd like to, maybe we should give that, can we give that a once-over? Is that all right? Do you need, um, do you need a motion or does he just left? I don't know what happened. I think his computer went out.
He must have.
The city manager just screaming from the room, so I don't know. He lost connection, so just, he's coming over for a second.
We need a, we need a, a motion to, to recommend possibly looking into the student loan benefit for spouses or, and families, or is that, can we just do that with this direction?
Sure. Mayor, Councilman Cunningham, that's a great suggestion. I've actually heard that from some of the employees already. What I'm going to ask is you just let me get this program up and running for employees and work out whatever kinks there are. But the other piece that's important here is I don't know the magnitude. And so I want to make sure that I don't make a recommendation right now, that then I have to scale back. I would much rather start off with the employees, go down the path, figure out what that cost might look like going forward, then I can expand that going forward. So if, I, I understand, I'm not in disagreement that there's household challenges, but if, if I could just ask for some patience on that, give me about a year to implement this, work out whatever kinks there are, and then I'll, I'll come back to you with some other thoughts on that.
10 for. I just, I, I, I think that's, I think that's the right thing to do on that one. That's all. All right, that's all I wanted to contribute about, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fimbras?
Michael, this is for the people that are, got the shot, right, vaccinated?
Mayor, Councilmember Fimbras, that is one of the criterias that I placed on it. The other thing I didn't mention is that, and I assume you're talking about the $1,000, not the, the Yes. So one thing I mentioned is, I'm assuming, again, it's all employees. And, and I did say earlier, the, the non-permanent employees, and I think that's an important piece, that even if they're not permanent employees, they would get the same amount. The only issue is, again, I emphasize, the proration based on the number of hours.
That includes our transit folks, right, our bus drivers?
Mayor, Councilmember Fimbras, that does not include our transit, because again, those are our contract employees. They are not included in this, in this conversation. Remember that the Teamsters have their own contract and have negotiated outside of our, they're, they're not part of the city structure.
I think we need to review that again, because that's a morale buster if we don't do it.
Councilmember, there are legal reasons why we cannot
I understand the legality of it. When you see these guys are risking day and night. A lot of them are women, single mothers that are driving the vehicles.
Michael, can you explain, either you or Rankin, explain what the legal reasons are that we cannot count Suntran drivers as city employees?
So Suntran employees are not city employees. We do not pay them. And the reason for that is, is that it's an interplay between our city charter and then federal requirements under the FTA. Under the federal requirements, the transit workers have to have the legal ability to engage in collective bargaining, including the right to engage in a work stoppage or strike. Under our charter, city employees cannot engage either in collective bargaining or engage in a strike. And so therefore, the Suntran, the transit drivers are not our employees, and we do not pay them.
All righty. Any other questions for that, or we can move on to the next item? I think it's wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Ortega, for putting this item together in, in record, record time. I am always and will continue to be an advocate for our city workers and make sure that they are paid fairly and have the benefits necessary to be able to have living wages and dignified life by serving their community. So I really appreciate your work on this, and this is great news. And hopefully we'll be able to get these $1,000 payments in their hands before Christmas. So, great job. Thank you all so much. We move on to item six. Item six is being presented to us and brought to us by Councilmember Kazachek. He's requested the discussion regarding film set guidelines. He's requested the discussion regarding film set guidelines, guidelines adopted by the Actors Equity Association. Councilmember Kazatchek.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor. This is gonna be pretty, pretty quick, straight to the point. A bit over a month ago, producer Helena Hutchins was shot to death on a movie set in New Mexico and we continue to see the, the media accounts of that. I've spoken to people who are both active within the film industry, the theater industry, and people who are not. And I'll have wondered the very same thing and what was a live round doing in that gun? Through the use of special effects in post-production, virtually any effect that they're after in the film industry can be, can be added and posed. There is absolutely no need for and no excuse for firing live ammunition during the filming of a movie. What happened to Helena Hutchins was, at the very least, negligent homicide. I'd also add that several of the people involved in both of those industries, theater and film, have mentioned to me also the lack of sleep and the grueling schedules that they, that they put up with and they go through are also a part of, a part of this, but it's not a part of what I'm advocating for here today. The Actors Equity Association has over twenty guidelines that they've issued for safety protocols when weapons are used. Now, the Actors Equity Association, yours geared primarily towards theater, but all of their guidelines apply equally well to, to film. One of the, one of the protocols they have in those twenty is a prohibition on live ammunition. So my ask of the council today is pretty simple. Is that we direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance that simply says, one condition tied to any permit that we issue, that the city issues is related to film or film-related activities, is that they will follow all the guidelines contained in the Actors Equity Association rules related to the use of firearms. So I'd ask that as in the form of a motion.
There's a motion.
I'll send that motion, Madam Mayor, but I want to make sure incendiary devices are also included in that. Are they, Steve?
Incendiary devices meaning what?
Bombs, firebombs on stage. We've had incidents occur with that also. I know that, talking to Paul Howes, retired TPD lieutenant, he used to be the liaison for this group. He also mentioned incendiary devices.
They're not in the guidelines. I'll let Mike speak to that. Rankin has saw him meet himself. I'm, I'm open to it, but Mike?
Let's leave some flexibility, if you could, in terms of the motion, in terms of being able to tie that to the guidelines or a set of guidelines that applies. Because that could be a broadly defined term and I know that there are a lot of things used on movie sets that are part of the special effects, which may be considered incendiary. I'm not sure. So, uh, but if you want to incorporate the spirit of it in your motion, Councilmember Kazatchek, just with the caveat that I think we would need to tie it to some, what these guidelines that might address. The idea being is they have to stand, they have to follow best practices for safety on set.
Fair enough.
And, uh, Councilmember Kazatchek, this is really timely because these guidelines were just approved. They're in, in statewide labor management safety by the Labor Management Safety Committee. As we all know, we just had a very, very successful pilot that HBO is filming here in Tucson and, um, you know, we are hoping that we have more and more of these shows filmed here in Tucson. So I, I think it's really timely and I absolutely agree that we should absolutely have this type of ordinance so that the film industry can follow here in Tucson. So there's a motion and a second. Any other comments and discussion by our colleagues? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Alrighty. So we move on to item seven. Item seven, I have requested for discussion relating to the appointment of our Chief of Police to succeed Chief Magnus. As we all know, and we've been going through this appointment process with our Chief of Police, Chris Magnus. We know that the President looked to Tucson and our own, very own police chief to recommend as Commissioner of the Border Patrol, which is a very good thing for us, even though, you know, we, I'm sad to see our Chief of Police probably leaving us pretty soon. It is wonderful that President Biden and his administration are looking to Tucson for, for talent and guidance and advice. And so most recently, we received the, the information from Chief Magnus that the appointment process is going to be moving pretty quickly here. And I wanted us to have a conversation as, as Mayor and Council. And the appointing authority is our city manager. So I just wanted to make sure that our city manager, City Mayor Ortega, you know, talks to us about where we are and what we would have to do as Mayor and Council to participate in appointing our next chief. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess to summarize what you, you said about, about Chris Magnus, and it's something that, that you've heard me say before. You know, the, the folks that we have around us and on our team are the folks that other people want. And there's no higher compliment than when others are recruiting some of our team members or a team member, particularly at this level. And so I think that it, it really is a testament to Mr. Magnus and, and what he's gonna be able to not only do for Tucson now, but for our entire country and even the world. So, Mayor, the way that this works or it can work is a partnership, right? And so when we recruited Chris, and we did, we went to Richmond and recruited Chris, it was a, it was a team effort. The charter talks about a, an appointment of this magnitude and particularly a department head, that of the manager with consent of the council. I have not seen that as different in terms of us working together and certainly having conversation and dialogue about all the, all of the, the opportunities for, for the appointment. I can also tell you that one of the charges, and Mayor, you were a council member then, and some of you were involved in the appointment of, of Chief Magnus. One of the things that we wanted him to do was to develop his team. Develop the, the team that, that he was going to assemble, but not just to assemble to support him, but also make sure that there was some succession planning discussed and there was really an opportunity to have others take his place when, when he was ready to move on and do other things. So with that, it's really up to us as a team to talk through what that process can be going forward. I know that we have used different processes in the past. Everything ranging from an, an appointment, direct appointment, to assessment centers and so forth. So with that, Mayor, I'll, I'll take it, or I'll, I'll turn it back over to you and, and I'm really gonna listen for thoughts that you and your colleagues have on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I love the, the concept of making this decision as a team with, with your guidance and advice, as well as each and every one of my colleagues on the council. For me, I have, I have seen this appointment opportunity for Chief Magnus as a time, because it's taken some time and, and he's had to, we've all had to wait as a community to introspectively look at what we have done as Mayor and Council, as City Manager, as Chief of Police. The past five years, I believe it's more like six years that, that Chief Magnus has been with us. He's instituted incredible processes within the department, updated it. And as you said, has put together a succession plan with officers within the department that, and he's created an incredible executive leadership team at TPD. Frankly, I believe that the best approach as we move forward is choosing the next Chief of Police from who we have as talent within the department. And for me, that person is Chad Casmar. Chad has been our Deputy Chief of Police. He grew up in, from the ranks, right? He started as an officer and moved his way up. Chad has an incredible history within the department. He's one of our Tucson's own, grew up here in Tucson, went to Amphi School Districts and is smart and talented. He understands the needs of our officers at TPD and also understands the vision that Mayor and, and Council have when it comes to the delivery of public safety and community safety in our community. So, um, you know that he's created incredible relationships with stakeholders in our community. And I think that we don't have to spend time or money looking outside of Tucson for the talent that we already have here. So in my heart of hearts and knowing that we have an incredibly talented person in Chad Casmar, I would say, and I would put at the table for my colleagues on the council to discuss, of course. But just today, the Senate voted for cloture. It was a bipartisan vote to move Chief Magnus's appointment forward. It could happen either today, it could happen tomorrow or Thursday, his appointment. So I would say that we authorize our city manager to appoint Deputy Chief Casmar to be our next Chief of Police in the city of Tucson. I would also advise that with that appointment, our next chief, Casmar, do a listening tour in every one of our wards and with different stakeholders in the community. The first, you know, three, four months of his service as our new chief and have a conversation with, with the department, with his officers in terms of what they need, that he have a conversation with the community, with Mayor and Council, and that he get information from the process that we have been using for our community safety, health and wellness protocol and form a vision of where he wants to take our police department. So with that, I know I've put a lot of information and lots to talk about on the table. I'd love to hear from my colleagues on the council. And we'll go with Councilmember Cunningham, Councilmember Lee, and then Councilmember Kazatchek.
It's at this time that I want to echo my endorsement for Chad Casmar to be our next Chief of Police. He was part of the succession plan that Chief Magnus was putting into place. And then he stepped up and helped us really revamp and restore our nine-one-one communication center outside of what his regular purview is. He's a twenty-two-year veteran of TPD. He has a bachelor's degree from the University of Arizona. He attended and is a graduate of the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. He is beloved by patrol officers. He understands what we need on the officer wellness size, side and what we have to do to take care of our community. He works hand-in-hand with stakeholders like Dr. Balfour at the CRC and understands community needs around mental health and homelessness. He spent a lot of time training cops to be better. And that is, is some of the things that, that he brings to the table. What I really like about him, though, is that he's a lifelong Tucsonan. And this isn't just, this will not just be a stop for him. This will be a, this is prob, this is a realization that, that all of us have is to be in a situation to, to serve the town, the city we love. And I can say with all seven of us sitting around the table, that's what it all, all about. He's earned this opportunity. Therefore, I don't know what the wording has to be. What I'd like to do is put out a motion that should Chief Magnus accept his appointment into the CPB, that we, that the manager is directed to appoint Chad Casmar as our next police chief and that our new Chief Casmar participate in a listening tour as directed by the mayor's office. So that's my motion.
Wow, there's a motion and a second.
I want to ensure that those listening tours be, gonna be done, Madam Mayor, in the community, they go into Ward five, where it's all the wards have one, listen to the people about the issues and concerns that they have with our police department.
Alrighty, so there's a motion and a second with a suggested listening tour each and every one of our wards and with other stakeholders in the community. I also included the, the, the vision that he deliver us a vision for where he wants to move the department with the input that he received from Mayor and Council and the community and his own department. So if you'd like to entertain that addition to the motion, Councilmember Cunningham?
At, at your service, Madam Ma, Mayor, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee and then Councilmember Kazatchek.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have all the stats like the Mayor and Councilmember Cunningham do. I just wanted to chime in, though, with my support for Chad. Just watching his leadership within the department and then going over to nine-one-one communications has, has been a real pleasure to see his style and his approach with people. I think that having led over there in nine-one-one communications just makes him even more effective in the role as police chief, which I think is just incredibly valuable. And I tell him this privately, but I will say it publicly for the first time. I think Chad is a unicorn. I think he's gonna do a fantastic job. And I think that with everything that's going on here locally in terms of crime and homicide and all the things that we're dealing with as a community, it's in the city's best interest to put someone in right away who knows this city, who cares deeply about this city. So I think that this is, is a great thing for the city and our community. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kazatchek?
Thanks. I absolutely support the spirit of the motion. I guess I have a question for Mike Rankin, though. Given the way our charter is worded, can we make a motion like that to give direction to the city manager since it's his purview? Or can we just make a suggest, strong suggestion?
So, good question. Thank you, Councilmember Kazatchek. I think it's entirely appropriate since the appointment is made by the manager, but it's subject to the consent and approval of the Mayor and Council. That's the Mayor and Council act today by motion as offered, which is to authorize the manager to make that appointment so that you, so it occurs immediately upon the vacancy, assuming that Chief Magnus is in fact confirmed as Commissioner. Then the manager, the manager would do that. Yeah, yeah, so it's authorized too. And then what he would do is, we would schedule an ordinance at the next regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting to formalize the Mayor and Council's consent and approval and also to establish the, the salary of the new chief.
Okay. I, I agree. You know, he's, he's next in line. He knows the community. He knows the culture. He knows the direction the council's been going. I would also point to, as one other person did, I think Nikki did, his work at the nine-one-one center. You know, he stepped into a tough situation and, you know, kites fly highest against the wind and he did and has. I would say, though, that we, if we poach him from nine-one-one, then there's gonna be a succession issue over there as well that we have to, we have to consider. But I think Chad's the right person at the right time in the right place. I'm, I hate to see Chris go. But Mayor, you said they, they did cloture today, so they cut off debate and now they're just waiting for a vote?
Yes, um, the cloture vote just happened and it was a bipartisan, as bipartisan as you can get at the Senate, but good, good, a good sign. We have not heard from our federal lobbyists if they're going to schedule the vote for tonight or tomorrow. But it's pending and it's imminent. Alrighty. Alrighty. Alrighty, alrighty, I do see the hands up from our newbie and newest addition to the mayor and council, council member Dahl and then council member Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to say, I just want to agree, I think this is the right choice and doing it quickly makes a lot of sense. It doesn't make sense to do a national search when we have such talent, right? And with so much support, obvious support, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Santa Cruz.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I guess I wanted to just, you know, chime in in my support for Chad as well. I've been, you know, encouraged over the past two years, you know, getting to know him. The way that he shows up with great humility, you know, and and with a lot of respect. Even when people are coming from like divergent perspectives. And so it's something that I've appreciated in developing, you know, a relationship with him. And I look forward to continuing to work with him. I know that he could retire now, and so I think it's crazy that he'd want to step into like a no win, you know, position. So just, you know, thank you, Chad, for stepping up to the plate. And yeah, looking forward to continuing the work to, you know, serve our community here.
Well, there's a motion on the floor and there's a second. I do see Mike Rankin's hand up. Mike, do you still have your hand up or is it from before?
No, it's it's a new hand, Mayor, and I was just going to share that I received a message from Chief Magnus that it looks like the confirmation vote itself is likely to occur within the next 30 minutes.
Oh, my God, well, this was serendipitous to have this item. And because we had heard from the chief that Chief Magnus, that that this was going to start happening quickly. I I just wanted to make sure that we had this conversation. I'm so happy that you all feel the way you do. But I think part of this particular team that we have on this table is also the 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 thoughts and what our city manager thinks. So I I don't want us to vote on the motion on the floor until we hear also from our, you know, eighth partner at this table. So Mr. Ortega, how do you feel about what we're giving you direction on? And, you know, what what would be, what would be your advice as to we move, give you direction and what's the next step? So first and most importantly, what is it that you think in terms of what we're discussing on direct appointment of Deputy Chief Casmar?
Sure, Mayor, well, the first thing that that I think, and I thought when I heard all the glowing comments about Chad Casmar. If you guys could just tone it down a little tiny bit, because I don't want it for him to get a big head. But two, I've still got to negotiate with him on 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 his benefits and salary going forward. So I just wanted to put that out there that I might be the one that might be the heavy there.
Mike, we just talked about minimum wage, right?
That's about what he'll be earning based on the number of hours. But Mayor, in all seriousness, I I think it's absolutely the right thing to do from from a few different perspectives. First of all, as some of you have mentioned, we are in a lot of challenges right now across our community. And stability and certainty are extremely important. And as I look at the situations that we face, moving forward and moving decisively in this manner is important. It sends strong messages. It also demonstrates strong leadership. So that's the first thing. The second thing is to Chris Magnus's credit and and also Chad for being the student, the opportunity to learn. And to demonstrate that leadership on the department or at the department level, not only in PD, but also in Como and and in communications. To take a very difficult situation we had in in communications and in essence, turn it around and develop strategies for the long term. Really speaks to the leadership piece that Chad brings to the game. So I'm ecstatic to hear that you all are are supporting that. That would absolutely be my recommendation. Based on what I understand, the vote to be at the Senate, the appointment could be as early as tomorrow and as late as Friday. So with this motion, what I will do is appoint Chad Casmar, bring back to you upon Chris Magnus's vacating the position or resigning. Bring back to you an ordinance to establish Chad Casmar as the next chief of police. Councilman Kazachik asked about communications. It is my intent to appoint Sharon McDonough as the interim director there. And I will move fairly quickly to have a discussion around a permanent appointment there, permanent process. I I don't know exactly what that's going to entail, I will let you know on that. But I will move to appoint Sharon immediately upon Chad's departure from communication. So Mayor, I appreciate that. If I could vote, it would be an ADO vote.
But you do, you do vote just by putting together the 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 contract with Chad. And I do see Chad on the screen. And of course, I I would say we have to ask Chad if he is willing to accept the mission at hand. And ask that he, you know, that he add his words before we vote. Go ahead, Chad.
Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Vice Mayor, collective council. I I stand in front of you humbled and honored to listen to this conversation. And as a third generation Tucsonan racing, fourth generation and and my love of this community. Two decades of service as a as a city employee. An amazing partner, my wife, who I met as a lifeguard many, many years ago, working for the city of Tucson. The opportunity to 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 lead the Tucson Police Department and work with such a great group of individuals and continue my work with Public Safety Communications. And as you described, will always have a soft spot. They have certainly prepared me for this challenge. I I I'm, you all know me, so I'm never out of a loss of words, but I'm at a loss of words. I just, I'm, I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to to stand here in front of you and be ready for this challenge. And I am ready. And I'm I'm excited about the listening sessions. All of your wards, geographic areas are unique, I know that, because I've worked for all of you in all those different areas. And I look forward to having those those conversations with you as leadership and the community members to hear what they expect from our police department. And also a listening session back at TPD, because I have been gone for almost a year. So I look forward to can continue to collaborate as a public safety team member between Mercy Communications and the Fire Department and in the Police Department. And I also look forward to the to the awesome work we have ahead with the community safety, health and wellness and being a heavy contributor to those discussions and the positive outcomes that we have in front of us. So 2022 is going to be a great year and I'm and I'm happy to be part of this team.
Well, that sounds like the choice to accept the mission.
I absolutely accept the mission.
Thank you, Chad. I'm looking forward to calling you Chief Casmar.
Thank you.
First, though, we have to vote. So what I'll do is I'm going to call, I'm going to call for a roll call. Mr. Clerk, can you go to roll call, please?
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
For Tucson, aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. Fimbres?
Congratulations, Chad, you did a great job, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kazachik?
Hi, thanks, Chad.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Congratulations, Chad. I'm looking forward to our work together and to see the vision that you have for for our police department in our community. I'm very happy and very excited for you and for us in Tucson. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Ortega, thank you so much. You keep us in the loop and make sure that we have this Chad's contract for our second and only meeting in December, which is December 21st. Thank you so much. Excellent, that's great work, everyone. We have item eight, which are state and national legislative updates. Are there any state and national legislation committee updates for discussion? Andrew?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, actually, a quick segue from the last item. I can confirm that the Senate has begun the roll call vote on the Magnus nomination just about a minute ago. And so hopefully in short order, that vote will be completed and our former chief will be the new Commissioner of Customs and Border Protection. So I just want to make sure mayor and council have the latest. As far as federal and state updates for mayor and council, really a couple of items for you today. First, I would respectfully ask for your consideration of the draft 2022 state legislative agenda. As we do every year, we meet with mayor and council and discuss priorities, issues, concerns going into the next state legislative session. Which this year will begin on January 10th with Governor Ducey's State of the State address kicking off the beginning of the new session. Mayor and council have provided input on what are the city of Tucson's priorities going into that session. And those are included in the draft agenda. Without going through it, because it is lengthy, I just want to point out two items for you that are different from last year. One is we've added a section, a priority section at the direction of the mayor. So usually we have protect city funding as a priority area, protect local authority, et cetera. We added a section seven this year, invest federal COVID relief and recovery funds. And this is in recognition of the fact that the state of Arizona has received quite a lot of federal relief dollars. That pretty much the governor, but sometimes working with the legislature, will make decisions on how to allocate across the state. And Mayor Romero wanted to make sure that intergovernmental relations was pursuing those dollars on behalf of mayor and council and city of Tucson priorities. So as those dollars become available, we will pursue those dollars in addition to other budget related priorities this legislative session. And then the second item I wanted to just quickly point out is the affordable housing section. This is something that mayor and council, of course, have discussed regularly as a critical and timely priority now here in the city of Tucson. With everything going on in that air, in that arena. And also based on your discussion last week with the housing affordability strategy for Tucson. We've always had a section in our agenda related to affordable housing. But last week, as part of your motion in support of HCD's recommendations on housing. And it wasn't in time for this draft, the submission of this draft. But mayor and council expressed their support for expanded low income housing tax credits in Arizona to assist in affordable housing construction. As well as support for ending the preemption on inclusionary zoning. So with last week's direction, I'm prepared to add those two items to the affordable housing section in the legislative agenda. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and look forward to your direction on this this new state legislative agenda.
Thank you so much, Andrew, for highlighting those additions to our legislative agenda. Are there any questions for colleagues on the council? Council member Fimbres?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to know about the landlord tenant act, what we're doing with that and also the posted reform bills. And also PFAS PFAS, which has been plaguing, I understand, his military post that was had to shut off the water because of taking of the wells in their under base. Andrew?
So honorable mayor members of the council, as far as the state legislative agenda is concerned. There there are aspects of the landlord tenant act that mayor and council may want to highlight and add to the state legislative agenda. It's something we keep an eye on anyway, again, in our efforts to to increase affordable housing. In this case, there may be some interest in just making sure that we keep an eye on opportunities to protect renters, to limit evictions. And those are the kinds of legislative changes that could be made in the landlord tenant act. So if mayor and council so choose, happy to add that to that affordable housing section as as well. What I'd like to do, Mayor, is I know council member Fimbres had questions about some other federal items. And if it's okay, I can, I could take those up now or we can do that after completing.
How about 2365, the cell tower?
So honorable mayor members of the council, council member Fimbres is referencing the bill that passed a few years ago related to cell phone towers or small cell, I should say, poles. And the the legislative agenda in front of you, I believe it is section two, item C. Says repeal or reform House Bill 2365 to allow for effective local control of utility pole and related facility location. So I believe that's in line with the directions that you've given me over time relative to the the current state of play when it comes to state authority over the locating of those poles.
That's great. I think if it's if it's okay, if there are any additional items that council member Fimbres presented to you. You can offline update council member Fimbres unless you think it's incumbent for the entire council to hear. Any additional, and so do you need any direction right now in terms of the legislative agenda, a motion to to approve or?
Yes, Your Honor, I would appreciate a motion to approve the draft 2022 state legislative agenda with the additions just now given by mayor and council.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
We got to be very cognizant, Andrew, about the voting by mail issues that they're trying to attack right now.
So there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have any federal updates, Andrew, that you wanted to inform us of?
So thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and members of the council on the federal side and to touch on some of the the requests just now from council member Fimbres. I've provided a number of updates through the Friday IGR update and in written responses to council member Fimbres's questions for today. One update that I'd just like to add is that it does seem to be, there does seem to be an agreement now on the National Defense Authorization Act. Which is something that has, there's been some disagreement between Democrats and Republicans in both the House and Senate. But it does look like there is an agreement on that as of this morning. We believe that the final text of it will provide support for the A-10 mission at Davis Monthen, which I know has always been a priority of mayor and council. In addition, and and actually council member Fimbres, you've asked me this before, relative to the NDAA and defense spending. The NDA does contemplate a 2.7% increase in salary for military personnel. As well as a 5.9% increase for benefits for military retirees, which I'm told is the highest annual increase since 1982. There are other provisions that are important to us, including some additional funds for PFAS remediation in the NDAA for the Air Force. I believe it's $175 million, as well as other important projects such as the Wilmont Gate project. So we're, we're eager to get this bill over the line and get that that support for DM and our local military, you know, over the line and get it signed by the president.
Excellent. Also, I wanted to share a couple of things with my colleagues on the council. One, we are trying to gather our representatives and state senators here in Tucson. Before they head over to the legislative session that is about to start in January. here in Tucson before they head over to the legislative session that is about to start in January. Usually what we'd like to do is if we can do it in person, we will do it in person, but we will take a look at the COVID numbers and see if it's safe to do so. If not, we'll do a virtual gathering with our representatives and state senators to talk about our, our legislative priorities. And that way they have our legislative priorities in hand as they walk into their legislative session over at the state. And then the other one that I wanted to share is that I am scheduling my participation at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in DC that happens in January. I believe it's mid-January. I will be present. Hopefully we will again gather in person. I think that's always decided based on the COVID numbers. And if we can, I will be attending the conference in DC and taking advantage of the time to talk to our congressional delegation as well as our transport transit, transportation administrators and other, and, and other administrators, so that we can talk to them about our projects and find out a little bit more about the bipartisan infrastructure investment and jobs act. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that as well. Anything else, Andrew?
Mayor, one last item, again, just because it's timely and I think it would be of interest to Mayor and Council. This morning at the Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting, two vacancies in the state legislature were filled by votes of the Board of Supervisors. They chose to appoint Chris Mathis as the, the new state representative from Legislative District Nine. And they've chose Morgan Abraham to be the, to fill the vacancy in Legislative District Ten. So with those, with replacing first Representative Friesen in Legislative District Nine and former Senator Engel, then her seat was filled by Representative Stahl Hamilton. So, but with these two appointments, it looks like now all of the vacancies of Pima County seats are filled. And so another thing off the checklist and now we can get going with the, the next legislative session. So congratulations to them.
Thank you so much for the update, Andrew. And we did vote on the legislative, okay, agenda. Okay, good. Alrighty, well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And let us know, give us any additional updates on any federal movement, especially in our infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure and jobs act. Thank you. We're going to move to item nine, discussion of regular agenda. I know that the city manager wanted to clarify something. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had a question from Councilmember Fimbres and there may have been a question in, in your mind on, on item seven J, which is the Arizona State Parks Outdoor Recreation Grant applications. There was a question about the use of the Prop 407. I just wanted to reiterate what's in the materials is correct in that it says the Prop 407 dollars are acting as a match. So we're leveraging those dollars to get other dollars. So I just wanted to make sure that you all clear, there is no movement of Prop 407 money. It's really using the allocation that was approved by the voters, leveraging that to get more dollars in a grant manner. So that's all, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure you all were clear on that.
Thank you, Michael.
Excuse me, seven, I, I thought it was J, but anyway, seven. Yeah, I'm sorry. Excuse me, seven.
Alrighty. Any other of my colleagues want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, we move on to item 10. Does anyone have any future agendas to add at this time? Hearing none, study session is adjourned. The regular session will begin at 5:30 PM. The next meeting, study session meeting will be Tuesday, December 21st. I'll see you in a bit. I think we have a bit of time to take a break and have some early dinner. We'll see you at 5:30.